Thank you everyone for coming to today's environment meeting. First, we're doing public sessions first, yeah, so we've got some here. We talk about integrated partnerships, so if you'd like to introduce yourself.
Yeah, Emma Bryne, the Managing Director for this one practice.
Yeah, I'm George Gabrielle, I'm the Executive GP Partner for this one practice. I'm also the Director for Buckinghamshire GP Provider Alliance.
Yeah, so you might have seen the 10 year plans recently come out and there's a lot more information to follow. I've spoken to some of you recently at different meetings, but there's a lot more need for integration. And that's, you see, so really we just wanted to sort of come along, see if someone had any questions about it. And just sort of put it out there that we're looking, you know, we want to work closely with the community. Maybe if we can talk to each other in different ways, but if we can just have it sort of out there that we're trying to build relationships with different groups. And yeah, really just share some information. I don't know if anyone had had anything to say, or George knows, is in a lot of different situations to me in other areas.
Yeah, so Emma's looking at the North Buckinghamshire part of it. So basics around it are, we've had the NHS 10 year plan, you've seen lots about three shifts. And the one in particular, this refers to is the ship hospitals community, that sounds familiar. And so in Buckinghamshire, so this is work that's been called lots of things, but in many places being called neighbourhood work on labour teams. And Buckinghamshire's very, very advanced, Buckingham, we are one of 42 areas in the country. That are part of the National Neighbourhood Implementation Programme, which is kind of essentially NHS England's programme. For places that are ahead of the game to try and help them design how this sort of across the country. There's a really important document coming out this month, which is going to be, they'll rename it by the time it comes out, it should be out in November. Called the neighbourhood framework or the model of neighbourhood framework, which I think will be of real, real interest to this town council. And so the basics of Buckinghamshire is that the idea is that in each neighbourhood, health, social care and voluntary sector providers. Work together on local priorities and priorities that are also going to be set by NHS England. Essentially to try and collaborate better to provide people more coordinated care in that area using a wider resource of healthcare. So in Buckinghamshire, we've got six neighbourhoods. And they're all between 85 and 110,000, so just for records, one's the South Buckinghamshire. We've then got Marlowe and Beckingsfield, the Chilterns, Aylesbury, Wickham and the North Buckinghamshire, which is the one that relates to us. Essentially it covers the geography of the Swan Public Care Network and the North Buck Public Care Network, which essentially runs from just beyond the county border on all sides. As the north down to Edensbrook and then along to, along the border of Aylesbury. And so large geography, but not that large a number of people, so rural. And so we'll be working with the community teams, the hospital, the social care leads for this area along the voluntary sector. And on various priorities which might be partly dictated, but we've also used data to start work ourselves. And there's a number of things already happening, so what'll be the most exciting at the moment, we've got some proactive frailty clinics. Essentially identifying frail people who are at high risk of being admitted to hospital in the near future. And working with the community hospital to do something called a comprehensive geriatric assessment, which is not just medical, but also of social and occupational needs. To, you know, try and do our best to stop people falling literally and into hospital. And so that's just the first of what I think would be many plans, so quite exciting, Buckinghamshire's quite ahead of the game. But as always with public sector, no one really knows what's going to be demanded of us in the, in the near future. And but I think for this council, the neighbourhood framework, which will be coming out imminently, will be necessary. If you're going to be very, very relevant.
Are you all happily, Robin?
Yeah, well firstly, thank you for coming in. I think what I've read about it, you just said, is it's shifting to the community out of it. Key thing with these things is, will there be budget following the additional work? Because that's really, it won't work without finance. And, you know, the idea that using local community hospital, if you can be involved in, back involved in the community hospital, making that a fully funded facility. That secures it for the long term and also gives us a health base in the town which everyone wants. And that will be good. And the digital stuff, I don't really understand how digital diagnosis works, but that seems to be a route that they're going for. And it all looks smashing to listen to, but the actual wind out of it. Will you be able to update us more at a later stage, how you think it's working on a local basis? Because we'll, we'd do it elsewhere, but I think how it works here and what part, if at all, we can play in making sure that it's communicated properly.
Yeah, so just take those one at a time, so I mean, tons of updates, I think reversal does certainly very happy to come and report back to here. And so community board on what's happening in the North Buck, so I suspect a lot of them go through the community board actually. Because obviously that covers a very similar geography to the larger patch. And the neighbourhood project itself will also report into the health and wellbeing board, which actually is on Thursday this week. So there'll be the first update then, there was no money, and surprise, surprise. And I say that actually, you know, whatever people's kind of personal detractors have been, I feel very blessed with the area that we're working in. I think we have a really supportive and receptive joint acute community trust of the HT and the local authority beings, the single unit trees, really helpful again with, you know, people working hard to do the right thing. And so actually there's a pot of money, coin commissioning money, which is made up of things like best care funds and urgent care budgets. And actually, there's been an agreement from all partners across the whole of the county to take money, a significant six figure sum from those budgets. And pull it to, I mean, integration lead in each area, that we have a very experienced lady, she's worked for us, she's called Charlotte Bryne in our area, who's excellent. And they'll be an integration lead employed in each area for a minimum of three years, along with a joint director integration. So whilst there's not been any money for this, all of the providers in the area have agreed, this is such a important priority that they, you know, together from that joint commissioning call. Have essentially looked to fund the leadership of it. And we're hoping over time, there'll be some resources coming through specifically for neighbourhoods. But in other areas, people are just doing it in spare time and actually we prioritise, this is someone's job, this is in fact eight people's jobs, to make this work across Buckinghamshire. Which is, you know, I think quite innovative and exciting.
In terms, oh, just answer my question then, you've done. And in terms of linking together sort of, as you said, social care, voluntary service and GP practices. Because I know that, and it's been a while, but when I was working, I thought sort of how, one of our biggest challenges when working with other agencies was that none of us were using the same computer systems. You know, the physiotherapy team at Brookside used a different form of Rio to the one that we use, so they couldn't talk to each other. Our record system is different to the GP surgery, which is different to the doctors, to the hospitals at Stoke Mandeville, which is also different to the hospital, not the UK's hospital. Has anything, any thought kind of gone into that?
So lots of thought and not a huge amount of progress. So the HT will imminently be going into their electronic patient record, which actually is a really exciting thing, but it doesn't integrate with the, with our ones. There is a lot of work going on with the shared care record. And so for example, really exciting thing is happening across Buckinghamshire is that we will be sharing documents on that shared care record. And the hospital should be able to see pretty much everything in our GP notes, which is good. And we'll be able to see a little bit of the hospital, but they'll be able to see pretty much everything from ours, which is good. And so there are things like the new respect form, which kind of combined end of life care planning, do not sustain forms. And now essentially built in and completed on the shared care record, not in any of our individual records, which means that anybody can access it and see it. So that's kind of the first thing. Unfortunately, I think digital, lack of digital integration will be one of the biggest problems. We have also now got a joint social prescribing platform called Joy, and we're just starting to use it here now. But it's being used very successfully in Marlowe, Beckingsfield, which obviously, population wise, would not be similar to, to the North of Buck. So again, there's things being done, I think, you know, the kind of idea of a single patient record that spans all healthcare providers, which clearly is hugely sensible. It feels a long way still, but we can get better use of each other's record.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's difficult not to feel cynical about this being a 337th reorganisation of the NHS since I've been working around it. But let's be positive. Are there features of this strategy that you think particularly in terms of neighbourhood health, tackling issues like loneliness and frailty, as you say. That are going to give it a greater chance of success in terms of health outcomes? And my second question to run on that is, what sort of contribution do you think town and parish councils can make towards the success of this? And actually help our population be healthier, stay healthier, live longer, you know, life to years, years to life, that kind of stuff?
Yeah, so I think in terms of the success, I think a lot of the point of what comes out from the national level on this and how restrictive it is in what we do. So they expect there to be something called the core offer, which every neighbourhood expects to do, and we're sort of getting in support of that. I think where we've, where I feel there's a really good opportunity is that as well as that core offer that we will have to do. Actually, there is a big push to kind of have local priorities. So for example, in Wickham, which is a very different area to the North of Buck, they're not doing a focus on frailty, they're doing a focus on children. It's, you know, a lot of the generational household challenging vaccination uptake. In other areas, they're looking at other populations and all of this is based on public health data. We've obviously got a new director of public health that the local authority is really excellent and really is starting to give us some fantastic data to allow us to sort of set those local priorities. And I think in Buckinghamshire, there's also recognition that it takes time for the outcomes to be demonstrated. So obviously, you know, there are things that are targets for emergency seeing them like reducing unplanned admissions and bed dates at hospitals or keeping people at home. There's also recognition that if you're doing proactive preventative care, it doesn't feed through in month one or month two. So I think that's where I'm quite excited. I share a lot of the cynicism, but what I do think is really good is that the decision making for some of the combined health and social care budget will be moving closer to residents. You know, whether that be to Buckinghamshire Place and the Buckinghamshire Place partnership, which has all these key parts there, or whether that, you know, goes even further and becomes the neighbourhoods. And, you know, we're making decisions for our 85 or so thousand people who live north of Aylesbury. So I think there's opportunities, we're just taking the view, let's make the most of it and we get reorganised in a year. Hopefully we've got some good foundations for the next reorganisation.
Want to go to the rest of your floor, us to tell?
Yes, and so I think right now, I'm not sure what that will look like. I think the biggest thing in the future around the town council, I think really it's going to be about supporting public awareness. And also kind of being that critical friend to the neighbourhood work. So, you know, I don't know yet how this will interface via the community boards, which I think is where a large amount of it will be. Because obviously that then take the views of lots of representatives. But, and obviously we'll be reporting to health and wellbeing board, we're going to have challenges from past work. So I think for now, it's probably just an awareness, but I think down the line, I think it's going to be probably supporting around public awareness. And also, you know, inputting into, you know, what is likely to be a sort of board structure of providers, voluntary sector, representatives in an area. To, you know, try and set the priorities using data and incentives from residents themselves. Obviously a lot of people come to you directly, so we put them, feed that into decision making. But how that's done, we're just waiting on the detail.
Any other questions?
Just people resource really, because obviously, you know, NHS struggles to recruit for various reasons. Have you got the resources in the area? Not financially, but they.
So the idea of this is that it should be using resources we've already got in a more coordinated way. So as I said, we're thinking of this, that Buckinghamshire as a, as an area and all of the health providers have felt it's important enough to have someone whose job it is to lead that coordination. Right. Once you've got the priorities, what we hope will be the case is that we'll have people between all of our organisations. Ourselves as the public care network particularly, more than the practices, the hospital trust and the local authority, but also the voluntary sector. And then it's kind of essentially by pooling those resources into supporting our residents, rather than working in silos and being duplicating an awful lot of all we do. So I think a lot of it's about that coordination piece. And again, that's why we're so lucky to have someone whose job it is literally to coordinate the neighbourhood work. And it's not Emma's job or, you know, someone from North Buck's PTA or someone from hospital, someone who dedicated for the North of Buck. So it depends how much else is to do as to whether there's enough resource, but I think we can use all of our core resources a lot better to give us more opportunity.
And last one, Robin.
One of the, which interestingly greatly is to care close to home, because you only walk around Buckingham and you see most of your patients as head close to home. Will there be facilities in the new building where you can perhaps, will we have enough space to take that in there? Because it wasn't part of your original plan. And if not, will we be able to, they'll be able to access space in Buckingham Hospital to do, to make sure that is delivered? Because what we would get upset about is leaving Buckingham to go somewhere else. And they need, if it can be done closer where they are, they'll recover quicker.
So it's a really good question and again, the detail's not out yet. What we know will, there will be, and what we're seeing is there is a kind of expectation for there to be a neighbourhood hub in each neighbourhood. And that will be a physical hub, so a build, if you want, just one of these virtual hubs or digital. And in some of the places, it's been identified because there is a lot of space. So Amish Hospital, this is an example, has a lot of space in it that is in use, so there's a lot of opportunity there. Lace Hill will be filled to capacity for the reasons Robin suggested. And Buckingham Community Hospital is also pretty much filled to capacity, I think there's a bit of opportunity in the, in the outpatient space, but it's still quite full. At the moment, we don't really know what will happen with the North Buckinghamshire neighbourhood hub. We are obviously moving from our current sites to Lace Hill. So we are as a surgery activist, exploring the options of North End surgery becoming available for that type of thing. Obviously, it's not as simple as that, because we vacate it, the essentials, the rent reimbursement doesn't get paid. So the mortgages need to be paid somehow, we need to work on that. But I think between Lace Hill, Buckingham Hospital and a vacated North End. It feels like we should be able to make something work, doesn't it? But yeah, the detail's still definitely not, not out there. But yes, a neighbourhood hub somewhere in the North of Buckinghamshire, so it could be Winslow as well, that's, you know, but utilizing some sort of public estate will, will happen. But the details still a little bit off, hopefully by April, maybe I have a decent idea.
Thanks very much for coming, you want to hang up?
Yeah, thank you.
Just to say to members on our side, both Anna and I have been going to the integrated neighbourhood team, the steering group for that. So we are already engaging and the reason for picking Anna as messaging is obviously we think it's not even in the way that we can help. What I have suggested is that we, we will see the framework hopefully this week, and there's a meeting on Thursday, so we'll go away. But I was thinking about more concrete actions that we can do and we'll bring a report back to the future meeting on what we can realistically do to, to support us.
And I think this is a really good example of not just us, but you know, obviously you've got Anna in and she's, by understanding, is picking up a lot of social media and, and working on that. Because slightly younger than some of us, she's, and that's exactly the sort of thing I think will work really well, you know. Making sure that we kind of coordinate our social campaigns, you know, you'll have campaigns, make sure we get them on our side.
Okay.
So that's exactly the type of thing I think would be great, you know, to build on.
Very much, you're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting. Simon's got a better.
Watch it on YouTube.
My side on a career change.
Thanks so much for this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I'll send more than you can, do we have any? Any declarations of interest? I think no declarations of interest. I don't think you could tell that just yet, maybe in a few years. And item number three, to agree the minutes, the environment meeting last held on the 6th October. So item four, we have a shot of business please.
It's a teeny tiny report, my recommendation is that we breeze through these. I've not heard anything from members to suggest that it's worth them putting them up and restricting use of it.
But I'm in a band.
And I propose that we accept the recommendation.
Absolutely, happy to second that.
Lovely.
All those in favour? Unanimous, thank you. Next, we have item number five, so allotments, we've got a three in pan, we've got a fourth in date and we've got a whole agreement.
Yeah, I mean, so the first section is to, so I set out the, I may have actually some three year plan of how we're going to get the allotment stuff running. So the overall aim is to get an allotment association based up there. But we obviously got to get to that stage, so this is how we're going to get, to sort of set out how we can get there. So essentially set up a sort of steering group initially. And we've got people waiting, it's the regular interval of six people on the waiting list for plots. It's good, so I think that would be really good, moving a lot to do to get it set up and running. So initially, the sort of second part of them, yeah, part on two is about new, setting up a draft agreement. And all the plot holders, it should be something temporary for even that we'll have with the, with the plot holders before the association is set up. And I think of course, sets out all the things we've got to do to get us to the study. We've done our three year plan, but hopefully we can get an allotment association set up, a lot of surveying and map, but this is part of your thing advice. We've just set out what we've got to learn.
It's very slick. He's mad.
Making it all dramatic.
On your top right, it's got mute on it.
Yeah.
No time to get muted, just shut yourself down.
Going to sleep. And I was going to thank the estates administratively for all the work that's gone into this and the team and the rest of the team. And I would propose that we accept all the recommendations on it.
Lisa and Robin.
Happy second up.
Thank you, I always minded the fact that this is a agreement done. You know, I absolutely thank everyone for the work that's done in it. Are we assured that with the going forward, that we feel comfortable with it in it? Because not everything we've ever done has always worked out how we thought it was going to work out. And rushing to agree without discussion, it seems, the biggest stage. And they've got no problem with agreeing it, I think that it's a big step.
I completely agree, I would say that it is just a draft tenancy agreement, it's not a final document yet. Because there are some sections in it that are incomplete, because we don't necessarily know the size of what the plot's going to be. We don't have finalized pathway layout, numbering schemes, that sort of thing. But it's just a kind of a foundation that we're looking to agree at the moment, but I would fully recommend an excited discussion about it.
We'll sit back to that a little bit.
Lee and Fran.
Yeah, sorry, so this is just draft and we actually went up to the Mans Morton allotments in Friday. It was amazingly set up and we've already taken up things that we might slightly change in here. This is a very good point, it's in my alter side of it. But yeah, this is just a draft, there are things that we're changing.
I think this, this is just the, the three year development plan for the direct cash and allotments. We don't, we've got on to the, the tenancy agreement part of it yet, have we?
We've been sort of discussing them as a, as a whole, aren't we?
I did set. It's a set, it's a separate.
Five point one and five point two. Oh, I didn't hear about triplus.
Absolutely, yeah, so five point one.
Let's rewind and let's discuss this.
There's five, five point one's a three year plan. And I, I, I still, I propose that we agree, if we reach the three year plan, five point one, it should be discussed.
Do you want to like to discuss the three?
Our second.
Sorry, thank you, John.
Well, yeah, I'm curious, no, I know a little bit about the running of the Mans Morton's, it's occupied not, and I'm really.
May I just hold you one second, this is about the three development plan, we're going to move on to the.
Well, I think this is, this is not, this is going to be something back and back and back. Agree in that mouth of appropriate and then we can discuss it again.
So we have to go to the vote on number five point one, which is the recommendation that members approve, the three year development plan. Formally endorse the creation of steering group, volunteer participate in the steering group and agree to formal handover to fully constituted allotment association at the end of year three or soon as possible, subject to readiness review. All those in favour? That's unanimous. Five point two.
So before the chat, when is the volunteering going to happen, the steering group? Item three.
We need to get, sorry, you know what you said? The third recommendation, when are we going to get volunteers to participate instead?
When, when? Don't have a firm timetable on that. Obviously things I need to do.
But we're not doing it tonight?
No, no.
That's face for you, yeah.
Five point two. Formally working on the big draft interim tenancy agreement and allotment draws. Would anyone like to discuss, Robin?
Yeah. Quite all right reading them through, but I just need to check that. Didn't see, though it says it's a three year plan and a three year agreement. Should the principle of the break clause be put in there? Anyway, didn't steer that clause. Because both parties should have opportunity to reassess it where it is. We haven't put break clauses in things before and it's caused us a lot of problems. So I, I would think that that's.
Number four point three, termination arrangements.
Is that meant to be break clause?
Yeah, so that would be where, I remember speaking for you, it's a correct with a wrong, but that would be fleshed out in the final agreement. And it will say, these are the things that if you do this, for example, if you, are probably able to substance in under the allotments. I imagine that would probably be grounds for termination or if they're antisocial behaviour or non payment. non-payment of fees after a certain amount of time. And, you know, that kind of general thing I imagine would be included in them.
So I'm, it's sort of, it's a temporary arrangement. So this is kind of the arrangement we'll have directly with the plot holders before the allotment association is set up. When the allotment association is set up, there'll be another agreement that will, yeah, have to be arranged at that point. This is blocking the people.
Yeah, the agreement that's letting out. So through the chair, when we, this is an initial agreement, when we get to the full agreement, we just bear that for in mind. Because it has causes of problems in vast and, and the word break clause means what it says.
Yes.
Um, I think that should be added in.
I will remember. Uh, Fran and John.
And so this is an interim agreement to set up, set up, it's not.
It's a draft.
It's a draft interim agreement, but the, the three year thing is the plan to get the, the whole thing set up. Which is what we've just voted on before. This is a part of that three year plan, but it isn't the big three year plan.
No.
And three years is not, not, not something which is mentioned in this, um, document at all. It's, 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 it's a working part of it. Am I right?
Yes, this, this, this agreement would be between a, an allotment tenant and.
Yeah, and plot holder.
And Buckingham Council, plot holder and Buckingham Council until the allotment association is formed, which I'm assuming the reason we haven't got three years is hopefully it might happen in two years' time, um, and at which point a new agreement will be drafted because that would be between the allotment association and the plot holder. And then we would have an agreement between Buckingham Town Council and the allotment association. Which one, right, Anna?
Sorry, Megan?
Yeah.
Um, I think it's a great start. Um, I'm not no expert on allotment rules, nothing else. Um, what I'm understanding is with the three year plan that we've just agreed to, this will be some of the sort of early discussions between town council and potential allotment holders. To see whether they've got any thoughts on whether these draft rules are still are appropriate or not, or have other ideas, and then we'll come back to us for a confirmation of the rules and the others. That, that seemed like a good process to me, that we're engaging and involving the allotment holders or potential allotment holders in that whole, in that whole debate. Personally, I mean, I'm not going to be doing any of this digging at all up there, but I would prefer we didn't have the use of unnatural chemicals. Um, that if we make an organic allotment without the use of, of fertilizers, that we now are poisoning the rivercourses and damaging the wildlife in rivers and so on. I appreciate that might be a certain left field, but that perspective, that would be my preference. In that, but in the end, I will allow to what, you know, is agreed between the town council and and the allotment holders then brought back here, but I would just put that into the now, if we possibly make it an organic allotment. Um, so use plenty of other devices to eat the ground fertile and grow carrots and some of that whatever else. It's going to be grown there. If you can do that without the use of chemicals that could harm bees or harm fish, that would be good.
And you have any input then?
Yeah, I would. That isn't what I was going to say, but that sounds like a good idea. If it is possible, I would think it's not going to necessarily the allotment holders. It shouldn't be this day and age. And just to clarify, we are not actually setting out any idea of how long the tenancy agreements will be presumably. The allotment society wants it, or association once it's formed will form its own views on presumably one year rolling contracts or something like that.
So a lot of tendencies, and there's one of, um, for the Bows, the Danfords, um, it's a new thing, annual.
Yeah, that's what I remember as well. Yeah, yeah. So there is in fact no three year clause at all, nor will there be.
No, 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 there's three years.
I know, I know. I just wanted to clarify that.
But Robyn then, uh, Fran.
Yeah. Most allotment holders, um, um, eat the food that they grow, so, um, they're quite keen to grow the food that they think is most healthy. That's why they take advantage of it. Now, a difference between, um, sometimes in a large area, you do have to use certain chemicals. It's there, the only way you can maintain, but it's, but I can't imagine the lot with holders would want to be walking around with naps on their back. Growing it because it's bad manners to your neighbour. So I don't really be careful assumption that organic. And also if they import some manure from a farm to put on it, of course, we don't know where the manure comes from. So it might not be from an organic farm. It might have come from a, a, a normal farm. So although the muck might be organic or the chicken muck comes in, we don't know where that comes from in the pellics. So it could set us out an incredible, difficult problem with that. The thing that I did look at the twelve of thirty three, I was surprised it says two members of the committee, most agreements. In my time, the town council has always had the mayor and the chair of the committee sign. It, it, it says two members of the committee, most agreements I've ever seen signed is always twelve of thirty three.
Which one?
Um, it says two members of the committee, that's I read it earlier today, um.
The agreement made between Buckingham Town Council and the town.
Yeah, sometimes we've always give, it's the chair of the committee and maybe the mayor, this is, neither of you or the mayor signs some things. So I know that there was a lot of, um, we ended up with three signatures on pieces of paper to settle a dispute, um, years ago when we took over all, all the things I just think that maybe it's just some real institute.
I can't see it. Do you, are you talking about the, the, so the mayor decided behalf of Buckingham Town Council?
Yeah.
We can't, we can't see where, where it says.
It's, it's, the agreement is made between Buckingham Town Council and the town.
Yeah, where does it say? Doesn't say anything about two members of the committee, does it?
No, obviously not.
Maybe in another paragraph.
Oh, it said Buckingham Town Council one and two, the town.
Yeah.
Is that potentially?
Oh, it's got here at the bottom of page fifteen of thirty three, executed by the council by signing by two members of the com- committee.
Sounds like where I'm going. So, so why? So I'm.
Did a search on it.
Yes, and I looked at it earlier today and, and I thought, well, I, in my time, I've always enjoyed seeing eight men and sign it.
It's just general paperwork, it's only mainly the googly sign.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, it's, it's had two members of the committee.
I think that's.
Could be a bit ominous. There could be up to sort of fifty of these agreements with tenants, the, the agreement between, when it comes to it, Buckingham Town Council and the association, that's probably the mayor or.
Yeah, that makes sense.
That would be where I thought, yeah, but, um.
Jake's day ones.
So, um, am I taking it through the chair that, that I think it would be enough to just sign the agreement that it said two members of the committee?
I think that's because we've gotten places in it from some of the houses and used somebody else's text and that would be two members of the allotment committee that would.
No, I don't remember.
So we were raised it.
It was. This is, this is only after that, I would say, and the intention was to put it up there for, for thoughts before we go away and then commit to it, so we can have it back.
Fran?
Um, so, sorry, stepping back slightly on the, um, um, John's thought about, um, organic produce, et cetera. There is a line in there about chemicals and pest control. It says permitted chemicals only must be used responsibly.
Yeah.
Um, and I take Robin's, um, points that, yes, um, like the, this food, this stuff that's being grown is for personal consumption. It's not for, not for, um, for sale apart from perhaps um, if there's surplus produce, um, there's, there's a clause in there about that, um. I think most people really are trying their best not to, um, use huge amounts of chemicals. But as Robin says, I think it would be, um, quite onerous to um, actually say, well, to police it for a start, but to, to say, no, it's got, you've got to be um, hundred percent organic on here. I think, I think that's down to papers.
It, it's something that allotment.
Sorry, I've started to kind of do that.
It's all right, go on. I was just gonna say, I think it's something that an allotment association could probably take on and when they're in place, they can encourage plot holders to use more natural methods and, um, and teach, because that tends to be what allotment associations do, that it tends to be people with more time on their hands than others that are willing to kind of share the knowledge that they've learnt over the years and to take on that.
Um, and also the thing about the mayor having to sign every one of these documents, I think that's just, um, not a practical thing at all. Um, whoever is the mayor at the time, having to come into the office or go up to the allotments to sign an individual, um, um, allotment holders, um, form is, um, yeah, I think, I think a little bit over the top.
Nice thought, Robin.
They're two members.
Play them over there, but yeah. So I would like to propose that we, um, accept the recommendations, um, if we have, we have, obviously, taken board suggestions that have been made by the committee members. Um, and you know, both end at the final tenancy agreement, the final interim tenancy agreement will come back from the committee group involved before it's that was set in stone.
Yeah.
I'd like to second that.
Yeah, uh, all those in favour? Maxie, Anna, Ross.
We recorded our thanks, where it's gone in.
I think we did.
Exactly, yeah, yeah.
They've done a lot of work.
Yeah.
Thanks, Lee. And for yours.
Um, and that's budgets.
Yes.
As everyone has chances, really.
Yeah.
John?
Yeah, I think it's twenty of thirty three. Uh, four, six, oh, three, the water or the gormals meadows toilets and shopping, we'll see. It's obviously a lot more than we expected. It says though, higher bill than anticipated, no previous to gauge. This building's been open a number of years. I wonder why is it only now we found out how much the water is?
This is the first time we received a bill for, for that particular building.
Wow, okay.
I'll shut up.
This is, uh, relating to twenty one of thirty three. This is the line on two, five, two. Borton Park expenditure repairs and maintenance fund and that's the bridge repairs. Could you just remind us why we spent, um, quite a lot more on this than we had anticipated last year?
So at the moment, the thirty four thousand and sixty pounds is in committed expenditure.
Okay.
Because this is for the work that we're going to do. We are committed to spending it, so it's sat in that budget line.
Mm-hmm.
And so this was budgeted for last year, the year before potentially we went, so it's sat in our E M R reserve, ready to go. But we need to move it to an expenditure line. Don't want to spend it.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
It does make sense, yeah. Yeah, I know, it's just, yeah, thank you.
Fran, Johnny, then, Owen.
Um. On that same thing, Borton Park Bridge, um, repairs, um, can we assume that we're having to still maintain the bridge that we're still waiting for the Environment Agency to let us take out?
Also, yeah, we're checking, checking it weekly, preparing boards, actually the staff have moved it up in the mail through. Um, it'll be factually required on the applications that, uh, they've approved up now. Um, so I'm in discussion with the contract.
All right.
I don't think it's, it's safe time to be doing work on the roof. But he is going to come down next week. He said no luck and make his own assessment.
Thank you. Excellent. Thank you very much.
I thought it was never going to be.
Page twenty two of thirty three, couple of points. Uh, structural repairs being done as we speak to the community centre. Um, I, I guess I've left some assurance from the, from the group of house to manager that it's okay for the roof to be more or less completely bare. It's been raining lots in the last few days. Given all the damage that we've seen second to the, you know, the detto and so on. So it is significant. I'm just a bit worried because there was, you know, the art exhibition, had to use any art of the ball because leaks can be from there. It's a little bit anxiety producing, but I look for assurance. And I have another point I'll let Lee explain that.
So, yeah, I mean, the, the roof itself is sealed, so the underlay is down, about a third or quarter of it has been told. There have been delays due to the brackets, um, fixing the brackets, we needed some assurances from an engineer. Um, some of the timbers weren't quite as thick as they, they were, we thought they were going to be. So some adjustments needed to be made to the, for the brackets to fit the P V panels. Um, but we thought it was today, um, and it should be back all this week.
Okay, that's good to hear.
Can I clarify on that point for a second, Rob? Because I think members are going to ask questions now. This is probably easier to have this conversation now. The structural engineer originally gave us the go ahead on fitting these brackets. Had done it on the basis that the roof was built to a certain standard, obviously because until we ripped the roof off because it's underneath. And we took the roof off to have a look at what was underneath. It was about that big instead of big. So this has caused us to have a delay because we've had to go back, um. The company fitting the brackets had had to come up with something of a custom solution in order to be able to get the, the brackets to fit. And we've had to go up to the engineer and go, we know digital calculations based on this assumption, but now we've actually seen it, it's this. So there is going to be a delay and we expect that we will probably have the scaffolding up for probably Wednesday next week. This isn't something we could have done much about because until we've seen it, we didn't learn.
But the main thing is we've got a solution.
We have a solution. We have a solution and it should be done by Wednesday.
Robin and Anya, I'm sorry.
I got the second point. The defibrillators, I was listening to, um, a programme on Radio Four. Um, and it seemed that lots of defibrillators are not properly maintained, um, batteries run out, things like that. And I think it's very important, one that we are responsible for. I know we're not responsible for all of them. But they are probably being maintained. So I'm good to see and glad to see that more one is being said, presumably doing sure that.
Just so you know, so on, on that point, this one here has been replaced actually, um, it's sort of, it's not, the end of its life and it's still safe and the battery's fine. Um, but we were advised that, yeah, it's time to replace it, um. We're also updating, there's a, there's, you know, boxes, a little heater, which gets really cold in winter, so it's the battery as well, that's getting replaced. Um, so that's happening. We've got the A E D, just looking at the electrician to sort the other bits out, so this one, this one. But yeah, they're also on, on top of the, with the help from, um, from the A E D, there is actually that room.
Okay.
It's good to hear. Um, you can do that.
Thanks, Lee.
Well, yeah, I'm defibrillators. I think it's a good news story out there. I haven't been told. They managed to secure defibrillators on many sites now. I know on the spoke of laughter, they're waiting for when the mayor can take them off. Because they've done a lot of, um, work going into the new estate, so they've got agreements now and they've really gone on some of them, which is marvellous. Um, and that they'll be where they were. Uh, the question was, what I was going to ask is round the, um, it says the, um, play area, four, two, seven, five. We haven't, um, it says we've not percent used of the play area replacement. Is that going to be carried over? Your budget? Um, or are we likely to use that in, before, for the end of the financial year?
The plan is that that would move into E M R reserve three, 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 this is our forward plan for when we need to replace a play area.
That, that would just, you know, if we don't use it, we would agree.
We're not under faith, we need to initiate.
Do we need to, you better, or method, if you have a convenient?
When we bring the E M R reserve, it will come, it will be done.
Yeah, thank you. That's all need.
Okay, and, and apologies for taking us back to the, yes, um, to the roof of the community centre. I understand, you know, the.
I understand, you know, the explanation you've given us and it seems like we've. You know, this, we couldn't anticipate that, we didn't know what was underneath it, we've done everything to make sure that um. It's safe to proceed. Am I correct to assume that this will obviously have implications for the cost of the whole thing?
We have, Lee, well, Lee has been desperately trying to solve this over the weekend and into today, so really, I think. These structural engineers before and the agreement and the conversations with the bracket people have only really happened in the last couple of hours. So we don't have a cost on it. But yes, inherently, it's going to cost us money.
I don't mean that.
But now we've so far, just didn't see it.
Oh, absolutely.
Yes, so, yeah.
That wasn't, that was in no way my suggestion, just for the record.
No, I show your frustration, it seems everything that happens with that building just tends to be even more complicated and. With I'm so deep in, we need to carry on.
But Heather and then.
Uh, I was interested on page twenty two that there is subject for a biodiversity audit this year. Um, that budget hasn't been spent yet and I wonder if that meant that the biodiversity audit hasn't been done yet because. Midwinter isn't the normal time when you would do one.
We have, we have purchased it for everyone, it hasn't been done yet, but um, yeah, we'll come up with a timing right.
So probably, probably not, if it's going to be done this, this year then.
Um, so if you look ahead, I can pull the budget on that budget line, I would say that if it's under spending, that we would look to move to E M R reserve so we can use it next year.
Thank you.
Can you then want to move on to the.
I'm so sorry, Robin.
Put your hand down.
Sleep, and it just looks very odd after a while, uh. It's not the right sort of meeting, keep leaving your hand, um. I'm really grateful for the explanation of the community centre, I have to say that, um. None of us knew how that building was put together, um, and we are learning every day how it's put together. They all wasn't put together, so I don't think these things happened, they, you know, unbent. There was, but one of the things we had, I wouldn't go through line by line to see there's an urge to move forward. And I take it that those elements in this budget which haven't been. And that's because of the work that's going on, all the extra work, they're not being done because no one wants to do them. Because the work, other work's taken priority, things like log rings and stuff that, I'll leave it, that the town clerk will apply the same. Natural approach to those things which under spends, without having to go through them every one night. That I leave it, that the principle that the underspends will be, um, will be moved forward. Um, be established rather than try to go through everyone.
Well, appropriately, certainly. Forward budget, I have said if we feel that it is appropriate to move an underspend to E M R.
Yeah, I know, but.
But we wouldn't necessarily, we won't create any E M R and move every underspend. Or desperately attempt to spend everything for March if it's not necessary, so. Does that answer your question?
It's all last year, don't worry.
So should we agree to receive the budget and then do you want to have a look at the forecasted budget or agree to that?
Yeah. Proceed.
Agreed.
Yeah, we see, great.
And any questions on the forecasted budget next year? Robin.
Yeah, it might be. Fact that they, the formatting of them is different, um. There was things that I, I was looking at it this afternoon and going giddy, so I answered the phone, uh. The, uh, is all the headings when we come to the new budget transferred? Into the other, there's things that we were doing in this budget, it seems less headings on this. And there did on the, uh, if you look at all the. The mounts of accounts and budgeting on the other one, all the way down, all those subject matters. Um, didn't seem as many as those in this.
I think they're saying they're just spaced out.
Different.
Reasonably same, they're just spaced out differently.
Obviously not missed anything out, because it was just that I looked at all the lines and numbering something clearly and, um. And I was jumping from one to the other and then phone run again and, um. I would just thought that it didn't seem that we got as much in there as we had in the other one, especially when it comes to some of the detail stuff. Um, it would, and one of the things that popped up, and maybe if I'm wrong, I'm happy to be wrong, I couldn't see. We, though we've got the cemetery lodging, I didn't see maintenance in the old, how we, we got anything in there for the old cemetery. Because whatever happened with the, the boss to the old furniture.
So two additional questions, there are slightly more, as this is the budget going ahead. There are slightly fewer budget lines because some things weren't required, for instance. Public Works Loan Board Income New Cemetery is the public work, so we created that budget line specifically this year. Purely, it was not something, we didn't put it in last year's plans of head budget, we just knew we were getting it. So that line, for instance, um, two, six, four, one, one, oh, nine, exists purely to take that budget that we received through the year. But every single budget line of which we budgeted for last year or we need to budget for in the future. So you've got some in here that are ragged and they've got the word new next to them.
Yeah.
Because they haven't existed previously. But otherwise, they, yes, they are on there, and the numbers, when you, when you look at the column, goes exactly against what we budgeted for at the end of last year.
And and the old cemetery question, if it's an old, an irrelevant answer, tell me it's a question, it's a relevant question, just like.
So.
Um.
So if you look under two, five, three, which is basically cemeteries, which is unpaid, the top of page twenty five of thirty three.
Yeah.
So we've got a budget that I put in, for instance, which is new, which is called Tindibid Road. Wait, uh, rates or new cemetery maintenance. And I put next to it, combine the forty six and rename cemetery maintenance, could combine both of those together.
That's about the answer, I wanted to thank you, my worries are.
Yes, it, um, you see the four, two, two, five, you put no name, it's saying rename Rappi Road rate, so that would distinguish it from.
Yeah, thank you, thank you for the answer, it's got my mind.
John.
Yeah, there seems to be a, a big question in this forward budget. About the penstock repairs.
Yes.
Which cost about fifty one thousand pounds. Uh, if we agree to go ahead with them, they'll come out before you from next year, the precept next year. And that would mean a preset increase for this proportion of it, of eleven point two percent, jobs is a lot more than inflation.
Yeah.
Without penstock repairs, it's four point three eight percent, which is more like with. How much things are costing more and sold at the moment, a little bit more, but not much. So the question is, I don't understand what penstock repairs are. And, um, is it, you know, are they going to have to be done, in which case we will reset for them? Or is it a judgment call as to whether we do or don't them? So what exactly is it? Can you explain more please?
So it's a couple of things I should clarify, so this, the eleven point two two is simply against what. Against what we budgeted for last year. So bear in mind that I don't know yet what the tax base is going to be, that doesn't mean that we would need necessarily put in. It is against last year's budget. It's also important to know that where I've put holding figure for resources when it comes to the wages, that needs to go through resources as well. So I've put holding figure, um, estimate in there at this time, that may well, in fact, it definitely will change before. It goes to find the reset, so the, these are, this is the first. For you to look at what Environment Committee wants to budget for. Um, and to check that my, my calculations align with your expectations. In regard to the penstock, two ponds bank repairs, I think possibly the estate manager might be a better person to clarify.
Yeah, so so for clarity, the the penstock is where the stream enters, uh, uh. The water enters the stream system in Porton Park on the river, the sweep's came on the, on the riverside. And then the other side, there's the pipe that comes over the path and comes out into the stream, that is severely eroded. I do sometime, um, quite a lot of it is from when it floods, it just all pushes the bank away. Uh, that, that bank work needs reinstating properly. And they have been like that for some time, uh, the fenster obviously is safe. But we've, we have tried a few different avenues to try and get some funding for for that. Um, S one O six and a few wildlife budgets, but it doesn't tick a lot of the boxes in, in a lot of those sort of projects. It is essential maintenance of the park, really, it falls down big. Um, so if we've got a broad specification, um, and it includes, yeah, various different, hopefully different things for wildlife, but. Um, and and then it reinstates the bank running down a bit, there's a couple of ponds there where the docks get into the stream. And it just reinstates, it reinstates that whole area, um, but it's something I think everybody needs to inquire as well.
I think we spoke about the, the figure is a kind of top end estimate.
So it was about three years ago, we've got prices, um, so thirty seven thousand poundish. Um, so, yes, that's, that's quite a high estimate, but yeah.
Robin.
My reflection of that is saying, if you stand in the river, look at it, it, it's where it is. And as for the ponds, they've been an ongoing hope to be able to maintain, and one of the things that stopped us. Was we were told that they had to be done in a certain way because the ecology. In the ponds have to be managed, you, you can't just go there with a digger and dig out. You've got to manage the breeding of the fish and everything else, it's not a simple job to do, which is why it's taking time and, uh. And correct permissions because otherwise you wipe out all the environment that's in there, it might look nice. It's got water in there, but there had no light in there, it was very sterile, so we need to, I've got no comment of that going in there, it's a project we've had. It's had for years.
But this next class, no concern.
Just a couple, so, so that we're not in an open, this is not a full regig of the, the ponds. Or, you know, the nature or anything, this is actually really just the kind of essential banks, bank reworking that needs doing. We are looking at, second one O six has been a funded stream to really do something more. Um, more impressive or more with those pond areas. So I wouldn't want you to think that this fifty thousand, to be fair, it's forty thousand on penstock, the eleven thousand is, is the. That is already there, it's what we would spend in a year maintaining both end length, so that's not specifically for this project. So please don't think that it's going to be a lovely, huge, if this, this is the boring. And also, again, we are looking around getting quotes and trying to find out a little bit more. These figures, I'm not certain, so if, if I know, if I get a better quote in or I know something needs to change, I will change them before they go to. Um, the few, uh, when we have to go through resources, it goes for council and then it goes preceptively, so they, they are subject to further scrutiny.
Hmm.
Okay.
And. In fact, I've been wanting to question to clarify this, now this does not include work to the pond, so that has been answered. Uh, I had an, another question that was relating to this. I'm working on the assumption that the longer we leave this work, uh, the more expensive it will become. So from that perspective, I would, um, echo what Cancer Stuffer has already said. It will be sensible to put it into this year's budget if we can, or into next year's budget.
Robin.
It's very small money, the Grenville Garage Rent. Um, there's been various applications put in on that area of ground, will we be? Um, when the Grenville Garage, because it's been really useful to us to have it. Um, um, that may come to an end, that Grenville Garage Rent. Um, because we may lose that facility, which is a question for another day, but. We've got it in there because I presume that it'll be there for a bit longer. Um, and they'll serve as notice presumably, and they're hiding them on the move.
We have not been certain, no test, so I've wanted to go.
They keep throwing around the plan applications on them.
Yeah. Was your hand up, were you re- raising your sleeve?
I was, I was scratching my shoulder.
Um, are we happy to receive the draft? Lovely, so we want to open number seven on the agenda, which is the unauthorised encampments policy, and we've got a. Recruitment of policy, the Parks and Green Spaces Working Group.
Did anyone want to talk for it or? And happy, wants me to, um, it's one of the things, the Parks and Green Spaces Working Group have been doing. Various little bits of work, um, around policies and how we manage. We obviously had an issue with an illegal, um, illegal encampments and it became obvious that we don't actually have a policy on it. So it is what it is, I think it's very, very proportional, I don't think something particularly, um.
Just to clarify, because obviously it's called an illegal encampment policy. So then we've got the definition of an unauthorised encampment. And it's just the kind of, the use of the two terms are interchangeable, or should we just use one term throughout the policy?
I want you to change it, but I'm happy, I've no problem at all with changing it to an unauthorised encampment, if you did.
Illegal is kind of like.
Okay, well, in that case, but it's.
I, I do propose that we agree, I'd also be grateful that it's been produced because we did have our style of issues. And, um, when they, we had, um, communities moving around bucket and various places. But it's the office team, they managed to move them, now it land and move, they went somewhere else then. And then they moved the town together, but these pieces of legislation have been quoted in there, and they're all the right bits of legislation. Uh, I'd be just opposed if we agree.
Yep. Second round.
Second round.
Um, all those in favour? That's it, unanimous. Um, next. Um, bowl planting fucking scouts.
We needed the plants and bowls, the scouts needed a batch. Be nice with these two things and spend the entire morning digging small holes, not us. Um, it's just lovely that it's happened.
And that's it, I would say, um, it was one of the questions actually that we had from some of the Buckingham School children at the Democracy Week was. Um, how many, uh, trees does townhouse plant and how many plants do you plant? And we were able to say, well, actually, we did some tree planting at Leysdale Hill last year, we did some tree planting at E Cemetery. And we've just done a load of fall planting, so that was quite good, leave it be able to bring back to them.
That was seven hundred and fifty daperdils and snowberries.
Oh, wow, that's a lot. And.
It sounds like this has worked out for all parties concerned, it's a nice win-win situation, I recommend. Or I propose that we accept the recommendation to note the report.
I love it, the town clerk hasn't, they're all in the batches and I'm happy.
The mayor's not signable.
Take your second, and also a hundred, because it might be quite nice for them to keep it if, um, if the mayor did like a thank you letter. Because I, I just think it might be a nice touch for the scouts to have something.
Yeah.
The card. Yeah.
Yeah.
Happen with that, Madam Chair? She's like, why does she's happy?
That's fine, Madam Chair.
Uh, proposal by Anna accepted by Lisa, and please sign the report, all those in favour? And that's unanimous.
Thank you, ma'am.
Um. Uh, we made some compliments. Noted.
You look really good, man.
Yeah.
Can I just ask a question, sorry, about the dogs?
Yes.
Hmm, so. Have we got, um, a bin or in the park, so you've got to keep your dog in the lead?
We don't, and it is a subject that's been under much discussion by the working group as well. Um, and the working group would be first recommendation to go to the future Environment Committee, but no, we don't have a Bible. We don't have the needs of enforcing a Bible, but we do ask that dogs are kept under control.
We've got new signs. And.
Yeah, just to, just to add to what Roger said, uh, big dogs being muzzled. I think that's the danger now, been in the news about big mastiffs having a little bite on little dogs.
And little dogs having bites on big mastiffs?
Yeah, yeah, definitely.
A bite is a bite, Andy.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah. Um, I, again, we cannot, uh, enforce any laws. Um, we aren't the police, I would suggest that if you think there's a big dog that is vicious and needs to be muzzled. Or a little dog that's vicious and needs to be muzzled, then inform the police.
Or an owner that's.
Or owner.
Yeah.
Won't say what I was about to say. Um, I've got Robin, then Roger and Tony.
Just to, I understand the point Roger's making about bylaw, well, maybe it's something we should bring back to discuss. Ask them, Buckingham Council, whether they're minded to introduce bylaws. Um, and it's completely different, actually, completely, um. Having a one piece of role in one bit of land and no piece of role in another bit of land would get really confusing, they own land, adjacent to our land. And, um, it might be something that they wish to look at, but we should discuss it as a topic, not.
It is very much a topic that has been discussed by the working group, and I know that the, we know that the threat is out outside, and obviously we can talk things through, and maybe there'll be, there's recommendations for future environment around what we might do.
I've got, Roger, Tony, Fran.
I was just gonna add, sorry to my previous comment, that, um, there used to be a dog warden. And when, um, when it was introduced, that you could be fined for letting a dog go and not pick it up, they were quite active.
I mean, there is still a dog warden.
But you never see him now, because I, I remember because that was the, I was in Buckingham one day, and I could see that, the dog warden in the park. And she was issuing a fine for somebody that I knew, which I always quite thought was quite funny, but, um, but again, that's something that, I mean, it's not, it's not, luckily it's not a huge problem, I don't think. But it was just something that they were, they were doing at the time.
I was gonna say something that actually might be quite obvious to a lot of people, but keeping your dog under control doesn't actually mean keeping it on a lead. Um, so any enforcement is, would be very, very difficult, so when we think about it, we've got to think about that as well.
I was gonna say pretty much the same thing, um, um, I know several farmers who have sheepdogs, who, um, are never on a lead, um, but they are completely under control. And having a dog on the lead doesn't necessarily mean that that dog is under control, especially when people use, um, um, retractable leads, um. Um, the, the legislation, um, and, uh, like the Dangerous Dogs Act, et cetera, et cetera. Um, is to do with having a dog that is dangerously out of control, um, that can be if the, the dog can still, being on a lead, and its set can still be dangerously out of control, um, so um, both the policing of it, um, it is not down to us, and the legislation is already there for, um, uh, um, out of control dogs, um, and it's not something I think that we can, um, be going, going around and telling people in the park that they've got to put their dog on a lead, when they've gone there to have a run around or a dog class or whatever else.
Lisa. Thank you, um, when we had this issue in Bolton Park, uh, lots of signs went up. And that is exactly what people would say, is my dog's under control, um, even though they weren't on a lead, and, um, yeah. It's just something that can't be pleased, unfortunately. As I believe the new signs are, I can't remember the wording, but it, it refers to the dog being under control.
Doesn't show a lead.
Doesn't show a lead, so there's no confusion, um. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we ran on the dogs from the farm, I had three working dogs, none of them were on a lead, and I was completely under control.
Um, so moving on, the, the, we need to, acknowledge the, yeah, noted. Um, lost property log. Action log. So we've had that update about the, um, the EA about the climate goals, that's positive, Heather?
Um, relating to the idling, so, um, item there. Um, the Climate Cafe Buckingham have got an option on trying to get some air quality monitors that we might be able to use, it won't measure all the relevant pollutants, but they're kind of, I don't know about things, so we're trying to get ones at the moment, and then we could use them at appropriate places around schools to see what impact the, the idling is.
That's fantastic, presented some proper, um, what's the word?
Evidence.
Evidence. Evidence, um, but it's, it's numbers, it's figures, it's not just. It's been a long, it's been a long week, but it's. Yeah, like tangible data that we can present, so that this, this is science, it's facts. And that's Fran.
Can I, um, propose that we, um, coordinate with the Climate Cafe to, um, go and do another um, monitoring visit.
Yeah.
Uh, Bolton Meadow School.
Again, rather than, um, take this, is a, as a, um, with the Factory Future Committee, can I say that, um, Heather, I and Anna were meeting with the Climate Cafe next week or the week after. So we could have that informal conversation that happened to do that. Got any arrangements in?
Yeah, yeah, just involved, if, um, after meeting, we could have an email sent up to all members of the Environment Committee. Ask them for volunteers to do another survey.
Yeah, we don't need loads of people.
Yeah, don't need those people, but just so that we still.
Yeah.
Actively. Yeah, well done.
Yeah, one thing on the, um, um, the Environment Committee, one with this, the public seating, um, councillor Anthony Rolfe raised the possibility of a bench with the Buckingham Society awaiting updates, and we're quite away through the council and Anthony, um.
I, I made it, it's afternoon, I completely forgot to ask him, it didn't matter.
Um, because it, 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 it was an action from Anthony, I'd like to see it finished, you know, out of respect. Um, because, and it was with the Buckingham Society, I think it was about, they wanted to put a bench somewhere or do something, but we can just action that, and the one where it says the bridge, I've listened to the discussion tonight, um, about the Bolton.
Yeah.
Members do something, need to stay on here as an action, because it's been dealt with now, and we've heard it in the actual agenda being dealt with. Is there any reason why it stays on here as an action, because it was on there to get something done, now it's being done, and we're waiting for it to be done as it needs to be done.
Interesting. Um. Probably up to you, because do you know how far, is it a dead cert, we're definitely gonna be able to remove it?
Yeah, but it's enough of a way now.
Yeah.
See what the contract says.
Yeah.
Gives an idea of time into it, but, so.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
And, uh, Fran?
Um, so I think the, the, the thing on the bridge, I'm like, if Lee's only just had the, um, um, word from the EA about it, um, then obviously this agenda had gone out long before that. Um, it does need, um, to be updated still, because it's not finished, so, um, it's, it's quite a, quite a big project and it's an ongoing project. So there may be two or three more Environment Committee meetings before it actually, um, gets done, um. The other one I was going to say about the benches, then the council, um, former council, and, and to Ralph and the Buckingham Society, um, I believe that they're looking at putting a second bench in outside here. Um, from the conversations I've had with the Buckingham Society about the, um, the members who um, maintaining that, um, that flower bed out there.
Nice. Roger? Anything else on the actual report before we move on? Are you free to receive the report?
Yep.
Yeah.
Absolutely. News releases.
I think we should have a news release about, a good news story tonight of Townclark selling on all the batches on. Although it wasn't that, was it, the, the plant with the bulb, I think we should do something on that, it's a nice community story. And, and, and then, we can do another one when they all come up.
Yeah.
Suppose we do a news release on that.
Yeah. Great.
Yeah, yeah.
No doubt, happy. Um, I don't have any announcements, I keep on. Um, our next, to the date, next meeting, which, next year, yeah, Monday the sixteenth of February.
So two days off, one time, so then.
Yeah. Um, do I need to do the, the, sorry, first, on, do I need to propose, the proposal that we go into private session?
Yep.
So I can just send it by Fran, who is in favour? That's unanimous.